Good evening, we call the school board meeting of January ninth, two thousand seventeen to order. Sarah, would you please call it all?
Allen.
Here.
McKean.
Present.
Paz.
Here.
Romanski.
Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
And Bowerman.
Yes ma'am. We'll start tonight with some good news items. We have three items that we want to take care of. And the first two involve two very special people in our district who have been recognized for their excellence. And we have them here tonight and want to take a second to recognize them. To make sure that I get some of the information right, if they're with me, I'm going to read a little bit about your award. So Carl, Zach, Zackman, and Trudy Lynch were recently recognized, you may have seen this in the paper, as TIE's exceptional teachers. They were among seventy-seven teachers from forty-eight districts who were honored at the TIE's twenty-sixteen Education Technology Conference on December thirteenth, now in town at the higher regions. This award recognizes teachers who have used technology to positively impact student learning and model best practices in their classroom. And of course, we all know with the passage of the technology levy, how important that is to this district, and they have been exemplary in doing that. So I'll start with Carl. Carl incorporates technology to deepen student understanding and provide real-world challenges. As a technology education teacher at West Junior High School, Carl actively collaborates with teachers both within and outside of his department to build hands-on lessons that combine technology, mathematics, and engineering. As a first-grade teacher at Sweeney Elementary School, Trudy continually seeks to implement teaching practices that engage and motivate her students. She has embraced the use of iPads in her classroom and collaborates with others in the district to implement technology in a meaningful and creative way. Trudy continually generates and shares ideas for grabbing students' attention and for motivating students. And I realize I should have had them come and join us at the front here, but please do this, because we want to hear from you guys a little bit about the things you do. So Trudy and Carl, come on down. Join us up front here.
Thank you.
Are you here?
Yeah.
I'm going to present you the certificate minute. But tell us a little bit about your, how you're doing things, and what's so innovative and exciting about what you're doing. We'd love to hear.
Well, I'm still learning, but I'm definitely hands-on and will try anything. But I think one of the things I've really taken the big step with is just don't be afraid, just try it. Just try it, it's not going to be smooth, just jump in and try it. So I have twenty-four students this year, and it's been interesting trying to, you know, get everybody on at the same time. But I think one of our biggest projects that we really enjoyed was having the kids share their learning through a green screen and doing some app smashing where they were drifting in space as they were narrating some of their learning. It was taking four different apps and the use of two DLCs plus myself. But it was, in the end, it was a fun little project. We've been creating some assessments too to go along with some of the learning and having the kids rather than doing it on a paper pencil, do it on iPad. So that's been really exciting. Using Seesaw as an app has been fabulous, getting really good reports from families. So each student has an account and they upload their own documents. They take pictures, little short videos sometimes as well too. So that's been a lot of fun. So just trying different things.
Well, I'm a technology engineering teacher. So I have worked this really fun crosswords of teaching technology and engineering as a subject, but then also integrating technology to enhance student learning. So it's been fun this year. We had our ILTs, individualized learning teams at West. And we had to pick a subject area that we were interested in getting better at. And so I chose integrating technology. And I'm honestly, I'm pretty tech savvy. And so I've always kind of been like, I kind of have all the answers. And this year I took just a totally fresh outlook. And I was like, what could I learn from some of the DLCs? And Zach Edelweiss and Natalie Weyman have been working a lot with me this year. And I just kind of said, I bet you there's still some, a lot of stuff I could learn, you know? And so I took a fresh look over with the IT, IL team with them. I've been doing a lot of fun stuff with Arduinos. We actually brought five of our students down to the TIE's conference as well to present on some Arduino circuitry, robotics, and programming challenges that we did in my class as well. So some ninth years actually got to do some presenting in a professional conference format as well. So yeah, it's been great.
So you say we're on path to bigger and better things with all this technology in the district, I hope?
Absolutely. So thanks for your presence.
Well, we're happy to do it, but more importantly, you represent what's great about our district. Obviously, we're all focused about the kids, that's what you guys are focused on. But it doesn't happen without great instructors and great teachers on the front lines. So thank you very, very much for that. On behalf of the board, I want to present you with a certificate recognition. We're going to take your pictures, so come on over here. Now, if you knew, you're getting your picture taken. You're going to get your picture taken. We have another very exciting, and we're very grateful to have another group with us tonight. This is Chase's Warrior Foundation. I think we've got kind of a front row with us. So why don't you guys all come on up front? Tell us a little bit about your organization and the very generous thing that you're proposing to do tonight.
Oh, hi, hi guys. Chase's Warrior Foundation, we're actually a nonprofit that was started in honor of my son, that's my wife Lisa, Hannah and Dan Stein, Jeremy, excuse me, Anita and Jeremy Dretlau. And the two other members of the boards. But my son had a near drowning accident, well, four years ago in April. And for about twenty-five minutes, he had no sense of life, no anything. But, and through the process of his, he's good now. But through his healing, our friends and I and my wife realized how much life changes when something like that happens. And adaptive equipment is stuff that you just, that you need, that you had no idea. So we got together and decided, there's a lot of families out there that need this help, that don't have the resources that we have, and we decided to do a nonprofit. And so we are here with the help of the community. We did some, we did a car wash, we did some fundraising, a lot of money poured in from both Parley, Shakopee, and Savage. And also Menawak and Sioux were very generous to grant us a matching grant to give you guys ten thousand dollars towards the Life Skills Program to make it better and get some of the equipment up to date. I know there was a long laundry list and we didn't quite hit that target, but we're still working to get more pumped in, but this is a start. So hopefully, you know, the kids in need can use this and it'll go in a good place.
We're very, very grateful in how meaningful this can be for someone who's in need of those type of, kind of called equipment or just tools. And we're sad that you had to go through that experience, but now it can be a very positive thing that comes out of it. So we're very, very grateful and we accept this gift with all humbly, so we appreciate it very much. So thank you very much. Let's give them a hand.
How are you?
Yes.
Hi Sarah.
We love the other.
I think you're on the board.
Yeah!
You are, yeah! I've never been watching the playground that you've done. That is awesome.
Thanks for your work.
Is there anybody else? What's going to reach out to you? Call me, Terrence.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi Sarah, please.
Bye.
You don't have to know. This gets really boring. One more scene.
Thank you.
Hi Lisa, guys.
Thank you. All right, so do we have any visitors tonight who'd like to speak to the board? If there are, I would have them come forward, sign in. Seeing none, before we proceed with the agenda as is, a little chairman's prerogative here in my last meeting. I'm going to call an audible, and we're going to make a slight change to the agenda. We're kind of just so anxious, whenever Dave presents, it's just one of those things where we can't wait. Laid breath.
Did he tell you to do this?
No. But we're going to move you up, we're going to move you up, so come on up.
Okay.
Come on up, we're going to move into the presentation. We're actually quite excited about this.
I feel like there's, it's a candid camera.
So there's a cruise behind us, Dave, if you haven't gathered already. This is actually very fun. We've all known about this, because this was something we worked behind the scenes on. And we want to recognize a person in our district, guess who, Dave? Whose integrity, commitment, and unwavering dedication to Shakopee Public Schools has not only earned this year's leadership award, but also respect and gratitude to his peers, district leaders, myself, the entire board. And so tonight, right now, kind of off-agenda, it's all about you, Dave. So just sit back and enjoy for a minute.
Okay.
I'm going to read you a little bit about Dave. These are, these are the comments that were provided by his peers and by the administration of the district. And it tells you the kind of individual that Dave is. So Dave is a person, is a proven leader, I should say, who views challenges as opportunities. He delivers results and he replicates successes. That's very nice. He's dependable, efficient, and effective. Sounds like a boy scout. He also strives every day to exceed our expectations in service and support. He always, whoever wrote this one capitalized always, he always delivers. And that's true, we know that. He attended UW Madison for engineering, but eventually changed his careers and went back to school to become a teacher and then a principal. So the engineering world's loss was our gain, and more importantly, the kids' gain. We're glad he came to his senses, obviously, in that process. He has spent more than twelve years in our district. He's known for his sense of humor, his kindness, his consideration of others, and as well as his ability to remember everything, especially statistics from any given year. We might challenge you to that, don't we? He served as principal to schools, Sweeney Elementary and the Pearson Sixth Grade Center, where he welcomed the opportunity to create that new school and open in that fashion. His experience, his expertise and experience made him the perfect fit to help to transition kids to the sixth grade. To this day, we think that he remembers most of the students from years past. He's pretty good about that. The same can be said in return, because his students cherish him. And many times when they see him over the years, they're just as excited. In fact, it's said, according to some reports, that now at junior high and high schools, they gleam with admiration when they see Mr. Romanski. And shout hello when they see him in the building or out in the community. So that's speak volumes too, probably more than anything else I've even said at this point. He's a leader who has spent his entire career focused on putting the needs of our students and our teachers first. That also says it all. He's now serving as our data and testing administrator, and his commitment has only grown over time. So it gives me great pleasure to formally recognize Dave Olaski as the Shakopee Public Schools twenty-seventeen Leadership Award recipient. Please join me in congratulating Dave. Before I actually give you the picture and we do all that, you can speak if you so will.
That he told you.
No, it's actually three stooges, but.
Do you want me to present what I was on?
I was just to get you up here.
You guys all knew this? No? Okay. But you guys obviously knew. So thank you, thank you guys very, very much. I appreciate it. And I feel a lot of pressure following in the, in our girl winner's footsteps. So again, I just appreciated that it was very fun. And whoever figured out how to get my wife here on Monday nights, a busy night for her.
Yes, thank you for that.
So she made it work. So I'm grateful to have her here with me as well. So humble, thank you.
Well, let's get your picture, both of you.
How about that?
Let's get this way away from the monitor.
Was that backwards or is that?
Center right, yeah.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
This is one?
Yes, yes.
How long did you work on your report?
Hours.
Why he still wants to give it? All right. All right, so now we will move with the resumption of the formal business meeting. I am looking for a motion to consider to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Great, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. And now we come to the event that happens at the beginning of each year. We have organizational business, and we're going to begin with the election of the officers for twenty-seventeen. It's a fairly formal process that you'll hear us go through. And we're going to begin with the election of the chairperson. And at this point, I will open the floor for any nominations for the office of chair.
I'd like to nominate Scott Swanson.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? I have to do this three times. Are there any other nominations? Really? It's November eighth, all over again. Are there any other nominations? All right, I actually have to ask for a motion to close nominations too.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. All in favor of Scott Swanson as chair for twenty-seventeen signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Scott is now our new chair. Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are going to move along. And at this point, I will be looking to entertain nomination for the office of vice chair. And we'll just move everybody after we're done with all of the others.
I would like to nominate Angela Tucker.
Angela Tucker nominated, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
So, second. Second.
I can do that. Seconded by Mr. Bowerman. All in favor of Angela Tucker as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
I was following my script verbatim. There you go. Say aye.
He said.
Good.
Aye.
Do I have to say all the same signs? All the same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Angela Tucker is elected as vice chair. All right, now let's move to the, I'd like to, please focus, we're going to focus on this one now. Can I have a nomination for the office of clerk?
I nominate Sean Hallett.
Mary nominates Sean Hallett for clerk. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, can I have a motion to close nominations?
I'll make that motion.
All right, moved by Angela.
Second.
Seconded by Reg. All those in favor of Sean Hallett as clerk?
Signify. Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Sean Hallett is elected as clerk unanimously. Thank you, Sean. All right, can I have a nomination for the office of treasurer?
I would like to nominate Mr. McKean.
Mr. McKean nominated by Angela Tucker as for treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hallett, seconded by Mr. Paz. All those in favor of Mr. McKean as treasurer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Now let's move.
Uh, let us now pick up and read. A little brighter overhead.
Looks different from his performance.
Oh, I'll leave my notes. Oh, wait, I have to sit next to him?
Yeah.
Better than Swanson.
I left you my notes.
Oh, thank you.
Are you comfortable there, Rich?
Yeah, different view.
Is it warm around the center?
Yeah, he would hope so, wouldn't you?
All right, now.
There it is.
Oh, there's my, it's not me, it's his pen, that's my pen.
Oh.
All right, let's move this right along. As is the case with the organizational business meeting, there are a number of items that we need to go through. So we are going to, we do have to, in fact, vote on each one of these individuals.
Yes, please.
All right, we are going to start with compensation. The school board must adopt a resolution setting the compensation for the individual members. Compensation is currently at four thousand five hundred annually, with an additional five hundred per year for the chairperson and vice chairperson. So I would look to entertain a motion to approve compensation for twenty-seventeen as presented.
So moved.
Reg?
Who? Second.
Seconded by Mr. McKean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item five point three, designation of official depository and additional depositories. The school board must designate official bank depository. Ape Bank is currently the official deposit, official depository for the district. We will keep all of our funds in the official depository. However, we will invest monies through a number of institutions. Additional depositories are as follows. Hometown Bank, Wells Fargo, US Bank Minneapolis, US Bank St. Paul, Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, BMO Harris Bank, Bremer Bank, Min Trust through M or P M A, Associate Bank for OPEB trust transactions. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the designation of official depository and additional depositories as presented.
Second.
Moved by Angela, seconded by Ms. Hallett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five point four, designation of official newspaper. The school board must designate an official newspaper. The Shakopee Valley News is our official newspaper and the only local publication that meets the legal requirements for an official newspaper. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the designation of Shakopee Valley News as the official newspaper of the district.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Mr. McKean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Informational, item five point five, appointments to special assignments and standing committees. As chair, I'll designate, appoint and appoint these positions. And we'll have those eliminated. All right, moving right along. Item five point six, legal assistance. The district uses more than one firm for its legal business depending on the type of expertise that is needed. The, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize superintendent and his designated and/or his designated to secure legal advice as needed during the year. So moved. Moved by McKean, seconded by Mr. Paz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Five point seven, use of facsimile signature. The following resolution should be adopted so the district can utilize check signing software for two thousand and seven. I'd like to entertain a motion to have the school district utilize a check signing software and facsimile signatures for the chairperson, clerk, and treasurer to sign all checks issued by the school district, except checks that are written on activity accounts. The activity counts will be signed by the director of finance or the executive director of administrative services after all signatures are obtained on the supporting documentation.
So moved.
Moved by Reg.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McKean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Because I think you should sign everything.
That's not funny.
Are you talking to me or him? Everybody. We will take that recognition under consideration. At this point, motion carries. All right, let's move on to item five point eight, investment of funds. Action by the school board is needed to allow the director of finance to invest surplus cash prior to the time he or she receives approval from the school board. The irregularity of which, with which the school district receives its payments creates an investment op. If the, the irregularity with which the school district receives its payments creates an investment opportunity at certain times during the year. It is impossible to invest cash in timely way, in a timely way, if preapproval of each investment is needed from the school board. So the motion on the table is, the director of finance and his or her designated shall be given the authority to invest surplus funds without prior approval of the school board within the limitations set by law and to complete required wire transfers with notification to the board by the next meeting or as needed.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McKean, seconded by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five point nine, electronic funds transfer. Minnesota statutes four seventy-one point three eight, sub division three point three and three A requires the district to have controls remaining to electric funds transfers. I'd like to entertain a motion for the following. The director of finance or his or her designated be given authority to make electronic funds transfers, E F T, through the official depository. The official depository shall receive a certified copy of this authorization. The official depository will notify the district of an E F T within one day of receiving an E F T. The indicator of the E F T, the amount of the E F T, and the approval of the designated business official will be documented and reported to the school board at its next regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hallett, seconded by Mr. Bowerman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. What is this, Sarah? All right, item five point ten, prepayment of bills. There are times when the prompt payment of bills allows us to receive a discount. In some instances, we can't take advantage of these discounts if we must wait for formal approval of these bills. I'd like to entertain a motion for the recommended action that the school, school board of independent school districts seven twenty grant the business manager or his or her designated the authority to pay bills prior to the approval of those bills so that it may take advantage of discounts offered or prompt paid.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Bowerman, seconded by Angela. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Five point eleven, approval of P card users. And this was a spreadsheet that was in your packet. The following list of school district purchasing card users and spending limits needs to be reviewed and approved. Pretty sure we don't need to go through said list, one line item at a time. I would like to entertain a motion for the recommended action to approve the list of P card users and their corresponding credit limits as presented.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. McKean, seconded by Mr. Paz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Choked up. All right, motion carries. Item five point twelve, appointment of district physicians. There are times when the district has a need of physicians' services. I'd like to entertain a motion for the recommended action, appoint the physicians of the Shakopee Park Nicollet Medical Center as school district physicians for the twenty-seventeen calendar year. Moved by Mary.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five point thirteen, board meeting schedule for the calendar year two thousand and seventeen. Dates and times for calendar year two thousand and seventeen need to be reviewed and confirmed. This was also included in your packet. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting dates and times for two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McKean, seconded by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five point fourteen, LEA designation 2017. Annual LEA Local Education Association designation is made to ensure the maintenance of compliance with appropriate federal statutes and regulations. Public Law one oh seven through dash one ten and state procedures currently in effect. Designee will also act as a responsible authority in all matters relating to its administration. I'd like to entertain a motion for the recommended action to, that we designate superintendent, the superintendent as the LEA representative for 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Mr. Bowman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item five fifteen, oh, sorry, motion carries. Item five fifteen, designation of identified official with authority for M D E.
I know, I'm sorry.
Holy cow.
I know.
Yeah. I'm gonna try this again. Designation of identified official with authority for the M D E External User Access Recertification System. Got it? Okay. The Minnesota Department of Education, M D E, requires that school districts, charter schools, and other organizations annually designate an identified official with authority to comply with State Access Control Security Standard one point oh, which states that all u, user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. I'd like to entertain a motion that we authorize Superintendent Thompson to act as the identified official with authority for the Shakopee Public Schools for 2017. Moved by Mary.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Oof, that was a big one. All right, item five point sixteen, policy. The district's policies need to be recognized in their present form for 2017. I'd like to entertain a motion to a, um, authorize approved policies for the continuation in 2017.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Reg, seconded by Matt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Uh, item five point seventeen, board meetings on holidays. The board will take action to allow board meetings on Columbus Day. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve board meetings on Columbus Day 2017 as presented.
So moved.
Or, second. Moved by Angela, seconded by McKean. Oh, that's Paz.
Paz.
Paz. All right, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, Angela and.
Tony?
Tony.
Okay, thank you.
We got that?
Yep. Thank you.
Me, uh, motion carries. Oof, that's it.
Motion to make the chair read consent line by line?
Motion denied. Uh, all right, uh, so since we did not make any modifications to the agenda, we're gonna go ahead and move right on with consent. So I'd like to entertain a motion to, um, approve consent as. Supply. As presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Bowman, seconded by Ms. Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, since we were, uh, able to bypass seven point one in favor of good news, uh, we will jump right to item eight. Uh, specifically eight point one, it will business the approval of the QCOM plan.
Do you, do you wanna do it?
Are you kidding?
You wanna do it?
Do you wanna do it?
I do.
I know.
All right.
I think you should.
In that case.
It's a total idea. But let's do, let, let, eight, you go first.
You wanna end this, you wanna start it and end it?
No, 'cause I feel like I, I, you started with eight, whoever that is kinda got excited about it, and I don't wanna take that away.
They do get excited easily, so let's, let's go ahead. Thank you for your yield eight to QCOM team. Wes, come on up.
And that's great chairmanship, right there.
Oh, thank you.
New guy.
Please don't. We also have a lot of record good girls, so.
It's only ten minutes, guys.
Well, thank you. Uh, let me introduce you to Luke Meredith. He is one of our instructional coaches in district, third or fourth year as a district?
Third.
Third year. And you know Dale Anderson. Uh, a few other members have sat on the QCOM team, but I just wanna let you know, this is the man right here who did a lot of the work. We've probably, the, the meetings alone, lot of time, but then he'd go back and put it into the application, build it, run the numbers, so he, he did an incredible amount of work, so I just wanna give credit to Luke on that. Our presentation tonight is, is, is about ten minutes long, but I, i, if there's something we missed or you need more information on, please, please feel free to ask. Uh, you saw the first couple of these slides in, just kind of I sent out to you as an update, so if you wanna just, um, go through those. Again, our representatives that sat, you see two of them right here. Jim LaCausage represented, um, the administration, John sat on it, Nancy Tool and Dave Berlowski sat on it. That was our small working group for QCOM.
Is that the award winning, Dave Berlowski?
That's the award.
Am I hearing from you?
Let's just stick to this.
And then the timeline, you saw, uh, we, we came, I came at one point in time and talked about QCOM to give it the approval to move forward and study it. Dale has been working with his executive group, um, the teachers group, and then this past Friday, they got over seventy percent vote, which was needed in, in the approval, so just following the timeline through this process. And then, uh, what is QCOM? So I'm gonna turn it over to these two gentlemen to kind of walk you through what QCOM is and, um, some of the slides. Again, if you have questions, please feel free, um, to ask.
All right, um, QCOM, voluntary state program started about ten years ago. Um, the, the focus of QCOM has changed over the last ten years, um, and so we currently view QCOM, as you can see here, just as a way to get additional funds for teachers for going above and beyond and doing, being engaged professionals. Um, it, uh, along with that, it also is a way to just reinforce high quality professional development going on in the schools. Also, which is funded through additional leadership roles. And so a lot of the money goes to teachers, but it also goes to fund teachers that are doing more things in the school, leadership specific. Um, you get the money by, or you get up to two hundred sixty dollars per student as long as you do these five things. Um, and maybe Dale can talk about those five things in a, well, maybe not those five things in more detail, but what we're already doing that is in QCOM, but also in T D N E. Um, and so a lot of the things that QCOM asks for is things that are already happening in our district, the vast majority of them. And so what we actually had to do differently in order to receive QCOM funding is pretty minimal.
What would T D E stand for for the board that might hear that acronym?
Teacher Development and Evaluation.
That's the law that was passed in 2011 by the state legislature, and we've been working towards implementation. There's kind of a grace period to get it all put into effect, and, and now we have a, a plan in place as of the beginning of this year, so.
So the, the plan that we wrote is very specific to Shakopee. Uh, there are definitely outlines and guidelines that M D E gives us, and we have to fulfill a lot of requirements, but we are allowed to create our plan to fit what we do here. So for example, instructional coaches like myself are not changing in their role at all. So we were able to build the instructional coach model that we have into our plan, and so we're really making it fit for us pretty well, I think. It is true that there is currently no more funding for QCOM at the state level right now, but this has happened a few times in the past, and every time in the past so far, they have approved more funding, and so we have been operating under the assumption that's gonna happen again, and hopefully it will.
Yeah, and obviously if no funding were available, then this whole plan kinda just goes by the wayside. So, and we will be putting together a memorandum of understanding with all the details so that it's clear to kind of both sides of what, what's been agreed to, and so that's a little bit of work in progress. We don't have that put together yet, but that's in the process. So, um, we've gotten a lot of questions from our people about why now? This has been around for a number of years, how come we're only doing this all of a sudden? And really, it's because when teacher development evaluation law got put, put on the books, it really changed the dynamics. I mean, almost everything that's required in QCOM is required by teacher development evaluation law. And since we have to do ninety percent of QCOM, why not receive the funding for doing ninety percent of QCOM? So by doing just a little bit more, it makes us eligible to receive, um, funding that both the district and teachers can make good use of. So you can see the number of things that we're already doing that are required by both QCOM and T D E. Uh, three, three-year professional review cycle, professional growth plan and goal setting, three hundred sixty degree reviews, collecting student growth data, having administrative evaluations, doing instructional coaching or peer coaching, um, having P L Cs and collaborative process. So all of those are things that are happening. So we're adding two things to meet the final requirements, um, and these are just to meet the, the letter of QCOM, and actually will help us even better fit T D E, T D N E as well. So, um, in any particular year when somebody's not being viewed, uh, reviewed by their administrator, so they're in the summative year of their three-year cycle, or if they're not participating in a coaching plan, we need to have them peer reviewed. That's something we have not been doing, and that's something that QCOM requires, so that's what we would be adding, is a peer review process. Um, teachers in that situation would have, um, two review cycles with a peer reviewer where they would go through a pre-observation, observation, and post-observation conference. It's really building, um, self-reflective practice. Coaching, you know, uh, having a, a coach or a peer reviewer walk them through, um, whatever it was that they were asking for feedback on, and ask a series of reflective questions to get them processed through. How could I do this better? What might be more effective? What's worked well? What can we tweak, et cetera? Then the second modification we have to make is the, the, kind of the last holdover from the alternative pay part of, uh, QCOM, which was the main focus initially, and now has become less of a focus, but still is there. We've had to make an adjustment to our salary schedule, and we'll look at that here in a minute.
So this is essentially what Dale just walked you through, but the, the peer review only happens for teachers who are not being evaluated by administrator this year. So about a third of our teachers are evaluated every year, and there's a cycle. So if you're not on that part of the cycle, um, and you're not coaching with an instructional coach like myself, you would normally just get walkthroughs. Like this year, you just get walkthroughs from your admin. But once we have QCOM, you will get walkthroughs and also go through this peer review process. The peer review cycle is just twice a year, so it's just two class periods a year, one in the first semester, one in the second semester. Uh, and like Dale said, it has a pre-observation where you determine a focus for the, the peer review, and then it has a post-observation meeting where you just have reflective conversation about how things went and just engage with a peer, um, in things you could improve on or new ideas to try, just things to get better at. The peer reviewers are people in your school, people you know, just colleagues. We're looking at hiring around forty in the district, which works out to like between two and four in each building.
We would be hiring, these are.
Or, sorry, yeah, sorry. Yeah, yeah. So we, we decided to go with this model so that, um, the, the person coming into your classroom is someone you know and someone you already have a relationship with. We felt it would be a much more productive and engaged process if that was the case.
And, and perhaps even more important, that they would have a, a, a clear idea of what you do. So rather than having, say, a high school fia teacher come in and evaluate an elementary special ed teacher, uh, we would try to have a special, an elementary special ed teacher who could serve as a peer reviewer for an elementary special ed teacher, because the reflective conversation would be of higher quality when they have a better understanding of what that person does.
And along with elementary special ed, also try to get some E L people doing peer review, or maybe some media specialist people doing peer review, or, you know, someone in your specific field that can actually have a real conversation about the thing with you.
And that's really the reason why we took this. We originally had thought about just, hey, let's just have three, they'll do a full-time all year round, that's all they do is, is peer review, and then we thought, you know, that, that connection with teachers is not gonna be very good if, if we have people doing that. So by spreading it out across forty individuals who will train, nobody would have more than eight people that they would be peer reviewing in a particular case, but that would allow us to really specialize and to allow people who have unique, um, backgrounds to be reviewed by somebody who also has an understanding of that unique background and improve the quality of the conversation taking place.
We also think there's a big value added for the peer reviewers themselves. Since the peer reviewers are just teachers in our schools, they getting to go watch other teachers are learning themselves as well. And I think we might even argue they're learning more than everyone else. Just seeing other people teach and having all those conversations is a really valuable experience, so we would like to try to cycle people through that. And so it wouldn't just be, these are the forty peer reviewers, and they're always it. Every year, we could switch some in and just try to get as many people involved in that process as possible. So that was the first change. Second change is a little more detail on the salary schedule. So this is the salary schedule you see here, the, the addition we're making is on the bottom. Essentially, level two assistance track employees will not take a step on their steps and lanes.
So in a, in the evaluation process, when a teacher is e, um, is identified as being below standard in some area, they're put on an assistance track. And we have two levels of the assistance track. The first level is really growth model, where the whole idea is to build a team around them to help them, um, to identify the deficiency and then to work with them to help them, um, address that deficiency so that they can come off the plan and be back on kind of a normal cycle of review. Um, every once in a while, we run into a situation, whether, you know, they can't or they won't, a teacher's not able to make the change or not willing to make the change, so they get moved to level two, which really is the, for lack of a better term, the moving towards termination. It's really dotting the i's and crossing the p's towards termination. And so the change, modification we're making that's acceptable at, uh, the state level was to say, hey, if you're, get put on that level two, we didn't wanna punish the growth model part, because we really felt that that would undermine what we're trying to build there in terms of, this is trying to be a positive way of addressing deficiency, but by the time you get to level two, clearly there's been a, a disconnect that's happened, and so we felt like this was an appropriate place to say, well, this is another line we're gonna draw in the sand, you won't receive a step the next year as you move forward. So, um, ultimately, we believe that the effects of QCOM encourages, you know, it's just good practice. It encourages teachers to be more reflective, encourages teacher collaboration and openness, encourages teachers to become involved in site-focused professional development, 'cause there's a big emphasis on, with all the leadership positions around that, helping to develop, uh, you know, to, to create, create professional development. And it adds accountability for the leadership teams. So part of the funding that the teachers, um, will receive in this will go not just for incentives of doing well in the classroom, that's with, well, also to, to provide some incentives to participate in leadership activities, like being on the building leadership team, or serving on the I team, the intervention team, or, or, um, you know, playing different roles like maybe an academy lead position, or, or something as, as we develop over time. So there would be some, some flexibility to, to add some new positions as we go forward. But so a certain amount of this money will be tasked towards compensating people for the time they put in on, on leadership things. And we've already done a little bit of that through the contract, and this allows us to kind of expand that to some more of those leadership type positions. Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
How much will the taxpayer have to pay for QCOM?
Um, the taxpayer annually, we have figured out right now is, is if you go with, the levy's about twenty-seven dollars annually on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Very little.
So of the two-hundred-and-sixty dollars that is, you know, um, from the state, a hundred and sixty-nine comes directly from the state, and then you're levying ninety-one dollars, and that ends up being twenty-seven bucks. And the way that the, that system works is that you only get the matching amount of the perception that you, whatever you levy is what you can get in the, the same percentage in.
Same percentage of the state aid.
Of the state aid. So, if you only levy $1, that you can only have whatever, one ninety-oneth of the $169 from the state. So, basically, if you don't levy the full $91, you can't get the full 169th of that. So, it does require, for this to effectively work forward, it does require a levy.
And Scott, for the benefit of all of us, the top-line numbers are what in this?
It's about two, twenty-one, $2,100,000 is what the additional revenue is. About fifty percent of that going to incentives and things for the teacher group. The other fifty percent, approximately, would be used to help backfill many of the positions we have placed already, that we've already talked through, like this position right here. Would help backfill those positions. We're already doing that. And many, many districts when they began QCOM, were adding these positions and going forward with it. We went and did all of this without ever doing QCOM, and so now have an opportunity to come and backfill those positions.
So, we're in essence, taking advantage of money that's on the table.
Correct.
Because of the great things we're already doing as part of our own evaluation process and administrative process and what have you. And now, by adding, as I understand, the two elements, the two you talked about, we're able to tap into this increased revenue source.
Yes.
Seems like a great idea.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, Mary?
Who will determine the awards?
You mean whether or not teachers receive an incentive?
That's a good question, Mary. So, in the plan, we have some evaluation rubrics that we had to build, and those evaluation rubrics will be put into, or qualifications and qualities for certain leadership positions. Lucas had to do a lot of work on putting that together, and getting it into the application to evaluate whether or not they would receive that.
So, there's clearly established criteria for how you would do it.
So, your forty trainees, I guess you'd call them, who do they all roll up to as far as? Who are they accountable to?
Teaching and learning.
Teaching and learning.
Yeah. So, whether it be Annie Reitz, or Nicka Summer, just the people that the coaches work with, we kind of use them to help with the peer reviewers as well.
And we built in the plan a training process in the summer, and to build in the training necessary to train those forty, as well as instructional coaches as well, bringing our administrators back in. It was several years ago, Rod, you had frameworks brought, if you recall back. And so, one of the parts of QCOM is making sure that if I'm an administrator in one building, or an administrator in the next building, our teachers are getting a pretty equal look at what those evaluations will look like.
The integrator liabilities of the piece.
So, we've got a couple hurdles that we have to overcome. I mean, assuming the board says move ahead with the application, because that's what it is, the application at this point. The state has to approve funding, and then, as I recall from your description, is it, we're number twelve in line, or something like that?
Last I checked, we would probably be number twelve. That's, they could have had a couple that rolled in this week.
But the point is, the state has to approve the funding, and then it has to go as deep as us.
Yep.
And when that happens, if we've taken action to approve this, we move ahead. Otherwise, as you said, it just kind of goes on the shelf.
And it'd be enacted as a seven-one, start of the next fiscal year?
Correct.
The good news on that is that the track record at the state has been every time, there have been more people asking. Both Republicans and Democrats have liked QCOM as a program. And so, I think it's got a pretty good likelihood of being approved. That's been the track record, and it's one thing that they tend to agree on. And so, I think the odds are in our favor, so to speak.
And we have a January fifteenth deadline?
January fifteenth, otherwise, if we didn't get it by then, it would have been March fifteenth, and so many more districts could have gotten ahead of us.
We'd have pointed at that point, so that was part of the reason for acting tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Just an overall summation of great work, and all the, I've played a little bit in this space, and in part, some of those task force, it's a lot of work, a lot of thinking, a lot of heavy lifting. So, thank you all, to everybody involved in this. It's not an easy process to put this all together.
Thank you to the teachers for their support.
Yes.
Could do this without you guys.
Exactly. All right, we do have some action we need to take on this. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the district's QCOM plan for submission to the Minnesota Department of Education for Implementation. So, moved.
Yes.
Moved by Mr. McKean, signed by Mr. Bowerman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, according to our program, we've all been waiting before, we'd like to backtrack to item 7.1, and invite award-winning leader Dave Borlauski up to give us an update on the My Saber Plan.
You were going to tee it up, or was that part of the ruse? It came up.
Could you?
Lot for money, lots of stuff.
I don't, I don't know if it would go as well as it did in our rehearsal, but I'll take that. One of the things we've tried to do as a district is to show everybody where their place is. So, we've spent time in elementary, in middle level, and in the high school. It's always easier in the high school, you know well, to understand in career college readiness. But we spent significant time working with staff in the elementary to show, how does this all fit? How does this all work? The easiest way, I think, is through what Dave and his team have worked on, and that is the My Saber Plan, which shows along the way, what are, what's my bucket of responsibility? What do I do? How do I fit? And in a lot of cases, kind of like QCOM, why is this all not brand-new stuff that's extra on the plate? And instead, we're doing a lot of this good quality work anyway, so we might as well align it and be accountable for it. So, Dave's group has put together the version of what we're calling My Saber Plan, and we hope to kick that off and get that going, so that by fall of eighteen, we have a workable pilot model, or a model that parents can use as a dashboard, and kids can use it, and teachers can use as a dashboard. So, with that, Dave?
So, this comes out of, and I'm sure it's, you were at the, who was that? Who's that curriculum advisor this year? Sean saw this, and you saw, some of this was at the, I shared a little bit at the Curriculum Advisory Council earlier this year. But this came out of the secondary design, which became part of our strategic plan. So, if you wonder where some of that work goes, this is where some of it is right now. And My Saber Plan came out of, originally, it was called an ILP, an Individual Learning Plan, and we kind of branded it as Shakopee's with My Saber Plan. And what it does is, it becomes a framework of experiences that we will, that will be built into our system, E12, that kids get when they go to Shakopee. It's individual, in that some of these are experiences that kids will get to choose, what it looks like for them. But the bucket itself, if it said, "Visit a business, do a campus visit, create your resume," or whatever, it's going to look very individualized. But the Saber Plan itself is going to be common for all kids. So, I, when Rod was stringing me along here, of course, he told me it was going to be here, and I started putting together a bunch of stuff. And then I went in to show him, and say, "Is this what you were looking for?" And he said, "No, no, two slides." So, I really wanted to give you more of a connection to what we did. And so, I'm not going to do that now, I'm going to stick to the time on the agenda. But at some point, I think it would be worth it to see some of the iterations. And Rod mentioned that it was a team, and it's probably been a team of close to twenty people, and John has helped facilitate that group with me. And I'd like to, at some point, have a chance to recognize that group too, because really, it's going to look like it was a straight line, maybe, to where we were, but it has not been. And we still have some work to do. But the idea would be, and this is just a screenshot of one look at what, just a communication tool for what My Saber Plan could look like. It's kind of a roadmap, or path, to, through your time here in Shakopee schools. And you can see, just on this screenshot, that when you rolled over something, there would be a list of maybe four to six kind of key things that would happen in that grade level. So, here's one version of it, and I should give Sandra Reel a shout-out here too, who is really an incredibly talented designer, who we've shared kind of our vision, and she made it actually look tremendous, which is what you see here. So, here was, this wasn't version one, this might be version four or five. But here's the next one, where we added, there we go. Oops. Some Shakopee branding, and turned it the other way, and added the academies of Shakopee down there. You can see for kids as they get into high school. And what Rod was talking about is taking advantage of things that we're already doing. And I don't expect you to read all the details of this, but one of the things that we did is try to look for places where we're already doing things that align with the academies, and just trying to be more organized about it. So, if you look at the top, it's each of our six academies. Down the side would be grade levels, and we start plugging in, and we'll do this via articulation, things that we're already doing, that we can modify just a little bit to say, "Hey, if you're really into this, or when you get older, here's this gateway course, or here's an academy." And maybe even, we, at these, the elementaries we have, we start using the academy icons or logos, so kids start having that, you know, not age-appropriate kind of exposure to it, okay? And one other place we looked at this is part of My Saber Plan. Those activities that you would see within there would be meant to hit five different areas. We want to make sure that kids have exposure to academy selection, course planning, career ed, post-secondary prep and planning, and authentic learning experiences. So, that plan that you saw, and I'm going to show you the most recent version, that I actually just got today, and it's pretty cool. When you roll over these, you, these four to six activities that are within there will be across those areas. So, not only will they connect to the different academies, they'll make sure kids start to have introduction to, "What academy might I select?" Post-secondary planning, career education, and so forth. So, there's kind of a bunch of moving parts, but we think that we're really getting close to doing this. Here was just one version back, which is a little more complete. So, if I roll over grade nine, and let me make that just a little bigger for you. It's a very draft, but you'll get the idea. So, the four things at ninth grade might be, I did a mock interview, I got an intro to high school through this High School 101, I revisited or built my first, probably revisit my course plan, and I made a resume. So, they're not these huge, all giant initiatives. It's just making sure that every kid has these experiences. And from a communication standpoint, if I jumped into this, view more details, and it won't look exactly like this, but what you'd see is, what it is, and an explanation, why do we do this, and how's it actually going to happen? Is it going to be advisory? Is it going to be a project within a class? Is it going to be through my counselor, within my academy, and so forth? So, we have work to do on this, because we're really building a scope and sequence that's not only academy-aligned, but category-aligned to those. So, there's work to do here, and it's going to need to go through a bunch of people to make sure that it makes sense. And I'll show you one last thing, then I'll stop. And this newest version, and some of this isn't built out yet, you'll just see the look. But if I look at grade ten tasks, you'll see something that's a little cleaner, and will have pictures that are grade-appropriate for each one, and it's a little bit tighter there, and there's still some work to do on rendering this out, and the content needs to be cleaned up, but you start to see what the structure could look like. Some of this will be managed via other tools that we have, but I'll save that for another time for you guys, okay?
One of the things that we've talked about, especially with our elementary colleagues, is this evens the playing field. When you think about the early childhood, think about, you know, the, some of the best practice work in education talks about career and college readiness being even the fantasy world of, "I want to be a police officer, I want to be a doctor, I want to, want to." If they have no exposure to any of this by third grade, a lot of the kids are already so far behind in their skill sets, and in their ability to kind of career-college plan forward, they've lost out on an opportunity. So, from, from my standpoint, and I think it resonated with the teachers as well, this is an equity builder for us as a district, and it assures that we've leveled the playing field. And remember, what equity is not equal. Every kid needs something different to get to their career and college readiness. This allows it to be individualized on an individual learning plan. And so, I think from, from a dad's standpoint, it's easy to navigate. And from a school leader's standpoint, I think it hits all of the key components that this, the spirit of the law, or the spirit of the ILP stuff really wanted us to do. I, this is, this is really a phenomenal piece of work here. This is, I'm imagining others wanting you to pay it forward to them, and show them, and build, and... So, please don't leave us and go private. Please come stay with us.
Right now, there's a lot of meat behind it, but mostly, this part looks pretty. But there's still a lot of, a lot of work to do here, I already know that. But we really started with nothing, and it was very abstract. To have something to visually present it, to create that picture, is really nice at this point.
You had a framework to start plugging things in that we're already doing, and it helped people take that big leap forward, okay? Because we were kind of, kind of a lot of great ideas, but where, how's it going to fit, or how's it going to roll out?
Questions?
Framework questions. So, using the example that you did of ninth or tenth grade, I forget which it is, you roll over it, four tasks pop up.
Yep.
Is the task going to be the same for Angela's My Saber Plan, and Reggie's My Saber Plan? Or, might mine look different than hers? Or is it, are they, how customized is it per student? Or is it, these are the kinds of things we want every student to hit at those points?
That choice, but within them, it can look different. And I'll use the example again, as one of the things might be, visit a post-secondary institution.
Right.
You might say, "I'm going to Hennepin Tech, I know I want to do the robotics or CNC thing." And somebody else is saying, "I'm four-year bound, I'm going to Minnesota State," or whatever. And so, that part of it can look different, but the structure or the buckets will be, your Saber Plan will be similar to mine, be similar to Sean's.
Sure, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay? And so now, sorry.
Is this going to be easy, accessible for like the kids that move here from a different school district, or even from the kids from Saks? Are they going to backtrack and see the things they've done in previous years?
That's a good question, and I, none of, I don't believe any of this, from a pure logistical kind of technical standpoint, is going to be graduation requirement, or something like that. So, I think people will be able to jump in where they are. So, but for example, if it says four-year plan, and somebody's coming in in tenth grade, they're going to do a two- or three-year plan. So, I would say, yes, we have to account for that.
I would add, you know, one of the things Saks does is they do track and work with us to make sure that if we're changing the science curriculum, or we're changing, whatever it is we're changing in our curriculum, they, they pay attention, and they make their own decisions, but they tend to want to make sure that when their kids jump to public schools, that they don't, aren't way out of whack or behind. I could see this kind of a tool being accessible to kids and families without having to be, you know, enrolled in the public school system. That, that if Saks, for example, wanted to have this as part of their curriculum, or part of their administration behind the curriculum, there'd be no reason that we wouldn't want to share that.
Because at some point, this will be posted live, and anybody who wants can go look at it.
And a lot of the data's something pulling from other spots, too, the programs that we're already using in the district, so I mean, it's not like you couldn't fill in pieces that you needed along the way. You know, I don't know if there'd be a lot of value in going back and hitting stuff from previous years, but going forward, it wouldn't prevent you from, you know, jumping in at any time. Because we have, we do have a lot, you know, certainly, sponsoring kids moving in in ninth grade, you know, except for, so.
And that was my question. So, this is, could this be on the website that anybody can click into? Because I would say, pre-K, well, how are we going to get this in front of people? You know, and they're not enrolled as students yet. But I think that if it's on the website, and we can direct parents of two, three, four-year-olds, "Hey, this is available to you now."
Yeah. And so, just, I want to make sure, sometimes it's, because there's other moving parts with this, too, that this part is really a communication tool. This is to show this, so yes, anybody who wants would be able to jump in there. Okay?
Can we work with our photo vendor, and have everybody's page come up with their own kindergarten photo that stays there for thirteen years?
Oh, wow. Let's see, there's a lot up here.
Oh, boy.
There. That would be cool.
Any other questions for, for Dave?
Maybe just one more thing to man's point. I could very easily see our three-year-old program, or four-year-old, and so on, having a prescriptive part of this with the books that are appropriate, and so forth, to fantasy and career college planning. Even that early, we've seen best practice says you need to start those skills and those exposure kinds of things, play things in those years. So, I, knowing how they want to be more a part of the solution, I think they would jump on it and want to do that.
Sure. And just one similar point to what Rod is making. When we went around to the elementary schools, it was after, even though they're hectic kind of usually in the morning, after the meetings, we'd always have some teachers come up. And it's very positive, and they have ideas when they start seeing this as well. And it was, I'm sure you've heard people talk at times about their classroom libraries, or their level of libraries, and whatever. And sometimes they're organizing them by genre, sometimes, by reading level, sometimes, by author, sometimes, in all different ways. And there was a teacher that said, you know, "I could picture myself having an engineering and manufacturing book, and arts and community..." You know, it can be that simple. It doesn't have to totally rock their world to make it more equitable, as Rod is talking about as well. Just take some creativity and some structure. So, all right, good?
That's great.
Thank you, guys, again.
Thank you.
And you caught me off-guard, and I would say, some of those things that I get to do, and that I've got to do, and had some success with, is because I've had opportunities that, you know, Rod and leadership here has provided, you know, you guys. So, thank you for that, too. And again, thank you for, it was nice to have my life here. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing other news? Uh, nothing under new business or new business action items, so we'll jump to item eleven, community reports. Go on the table first or should we go on the horn as Reggie would say? Dave, anything else for you?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Brian?
I'm just gonna share one thing real quick. I had gotten some letters from some, from, uh, some students at high school. They, uh, they're doing a honors English class and Rinald Ulrich out there had them write argumentative essays. So they wrote me these nice essays taking positions on our internet filter. I'm gonna ask them to do themselves.
Good.
So that was kind of fun, actually it was kind of fun to read their essays. They, I had two kids send me letters, they did, both did a really nice job presenting their case and, uh, they asked for responses, so we really got, I wrote them, you know, replies to their things. So that was, that was pretty cool and I actually hope they do that, just something like that again. It was nice to have that kind of interaction with the kids and hear from them directly how they're handling things, so, just a little.
Great. Mr. Herr?
Uh, nothing more.
All right. Willa?
Uh, yeah, really quick, as it relates to the academies of Shakopee, next week, the tactical team for communications will be meeting to, uh, start drafting the brand promise. So we will do that next Tuesday and I hope to have an update for you soon.
Mr. Beasley?
As part of our safety protocols, uh, we rolled out, uh, a letter to all the parents at the elementary and secondary about the Alice protocols and we're showing a video to secondary students that we created in-house. So, you know, you always, when you do something like that and you have a topic that can be all, a little tough for people, you know, not wanna think about, you know, always wonder if you're gonna get a few phone calls and this and that. Haven't, uh, it's been pretty positive stuff for the, I think, uh, one of the letters went through, somebody's filtered, it came out in a different font, so they had a question about the font, they liked the content, so I think you'll feedback about the font that you use. But, uh, you know, even talking about our collaboration with Saks, I got a call from, uh, somebody from Saks today that does their safety stuff and said, "Hey, I hear you're doing the Alice, we're doing that too, could we see your stuff?" So I sent them all our, you know, crisis management plan and our staff training and our video and our letters that we sent out. So wouldn't be surprised if they do something similar and we're gonna go over there and I'm, you know, talk tomorrow night at their, uh, on their parent meetings. So, uh, you know, see if that comes up as well. So yeah, there's a lot of collaboration and, you know, good, I think goodwill, uh, between the two, so just wanted to share that.
I'm glad to hear that it's been received positively, it's a, it's a tough subject and it's good.
Mary?
Uh, shout out, and I, I probably should have prepared better for this, but a shout out to our wrestling team for their performance in, was it Fargo where they went, where that was this tournament was? And they just absolutely nailed it, which I would say, pinned it. They really did a great job, um, had several individual wrestlers who won their weight class, the team performed, uh, fantastic. And it's just incredible to see that program do as well as they are in that particular tournament, is pretty renowned, is my understanding, so kudos to them.
All right. Angel?
I attended the last, um, last week's city council meeting and they're taking a page out of our books and they're going to be, they didn't get it out of our, they came up with it on their own, but, um, they're going to be reviewing ordinances and policies. I'm gonna take a deep dive into getting rid of ordinances and policies that no longer exist or updating them, so that was my exciting Tuesday night.
All right.
Presenting its scale to the scale group on Friday morning, so I'll give you feedback on how that goes. Um, Ashley's worked on a presentation that John will use at Saks and I'll use variation then in scale. Uh, the only other thing is, is I know that as a board, we're kind of looking at, uh, as we come up to some of our upcoming meetings, we might try to make some of our meeting times align so we maybe aren't guessing at if we're at five or six, so that, that will be something to put on kind of your, your, uh, reflection time to think, if we were to think about meetings always being at five or if our meetings always started at six, what would that mean to your personal life, career, business life, whoever. So that's something that was on the burner right now.
All right. Sarah? All right, well, I wanna just take a second and since we didn't get to this at the beginning, and I wanted to publicly thank Mr. Bowerman for his exceptional leadership here over the last, uh, two years. There's no question that, uh, um, these are big shoes that I'm going to attempt to fill and you are still going to be the smartest man in the firm at all times. You get to keep that, just for the record.
The check was underneath the table.
I know, I know. So thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
In the last few years. All right, uh, that said, we will jump down to, let's just hit number fourteen, upcoming meetings and important dates. We've got our school board retreat, uh, Monday the sixteenth. We've got a school board learning session on January twenty-third, February twentieth, another school board retreat in the evening, March twentieth, school board retreat, and April seventeen, we'll be retreating a lot again in April again, from five to eight for those ones.
Would wanna call out to you that these were the ones that are non-typical. So we have a bunch of meetings that are in those dates that you approved tonight, but because you hadn't approved them, we couldn't put them on there, um, as approved dates yet. So these are your non-typical dates and your typical dates, you set those earlier tonight.
And was the understanding that these are somewhat dependent upon the need?
Need and topic.
Correct. And there was placeholders, so we had it on our calendar and if we don't need it, we just go home.
Agreed. And then also attached to your pack, it was the, uh, MSB officers workshop opportunities coming up here over the next, uh, month. For those that are ISU, Sarah, people just reach out to you directly.
Yes, please.
If you're going.
Yep.
Okay. In that case, let's move item fifteen and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I don't make that motion.
Moved by Sean.
Tony wouldn't have to anymore, I'll, I'll second.
It's not gonna make us do well.
That was an honorific thing, you don't have to anymore.
We were gonna wait next time.
All those in favor of this adjournment that's been presented and seconded, I would say aye.
Aye.
All those in both same signs? Motion carries, we are adjourned.